Or.
I'm bringing this regular town council meeting to order. Today is Thursday, October ninth. Um, Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
You may. Counselor Bragdon.
Excuse.
Thank you. Danforth?
Yeah.
Chair Danforth, I'm sorry.
It's fine.
Counselor Dumeay.
Here.
Counselor Higgins.
On Zoom.
I saw his mouth. But I muted.
Can you try that again, Counselor Higgins? We didn't hear you.
Present via Zoom.
We heard you.
Yes.
Got some new volume going on.
Counselor Mackin.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
And Counselor Pelletier. Thank you.
Would you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great body which stands under one nation, under God, in the discipline, liberty, and justice for all.
To adjustments to the agenda, we do have updates to orders number two oh seven, twenty twenty five, and numbers two oh eight, twenty twenty five. Not sure if Counselor Higgins.
I did email them. I'm not sure if he received his email.
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. It's two oh seven through. I'm looking at the wrong updated agenda. Let me back up. I've got too many papers in my. So.
You're looking at two oh seven through two eleven.
Yes, yes, I've got it. I'm newest. I'm gonna put newest and I think, thank you, updated. Start over. So we do have adjustments to the agenda, updates, orders, number two oh seven, twenty twenty five through two eleven, twenty twenty five. And as the clerk mentioned, she did send those out by email, so they're available as I thought as well. We all have printed copies here. Seeking approval of minutes from September twenty third, twenty twenty five, special meeting, executive session. Motion made by Counselor, um, who may seconded by Counselor McGlaughlin. Um, all those in favor, we're gonna have to do roll call voting. Um, Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Dumeay.
Aye.
Counselor Pelletier.
Aye.
Counselor Holland.
Aye.
And Chair Danforth. Motion passes six zero. So that takes us into our special presentation, resolve number five. Uh, proclamation, fire prevention week for October sixth through the tenth, and I'm gonna take the pleasure of reading that instead of assigning it to another counselor. So pot fire prevention week, twenty twenty five, whereas the town of Millinocket is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting the town of Millinocket. And whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries and many household devices introduce unique fire risks. And whereas most of the electronics used in the homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas the National Fire Prevention Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key calls to action. Purchase approved products only, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas the town of Millinocket's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. And whereas the twenty twenty five Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety, Lithium Ion Batteries In Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Therefore, be it resolved that the Millinocket Town Council and council assembled does hereby proclaim October fifth through the eleventh, twenty twenty five, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the town of Millinocket. Motion by Danforth, seconded by Counselor Dumeay. The council comment on the resolve? Any public comment? Any other needed? Other than we truly, truly appreciate our fire department and all the staff that you have here. Appreciate you coming to, uh, council chambers tonight.
Chair Danforth?
Yes, please.
If I may, um, after you take your vote, I would like to speak also.
Okay, thanks. So being no other public comment, we'll vote on it and then we'll let, uh, Madam Clerk speak. So all those in favor of, um, resolve number five. Counselor. So he beat me to it. Uh, Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Dumeay, Counselor Pelletier. Counselor Holland. Chair Danforth, aye. Six zero. Oh, you, I thought you wanted to speak, so I am able to present this.
If I may, uh, Madam Chair, so this is a resolve number six of two twenty twenty five. Um, and it's leading from an email that we literally just got today at one twenty-three, so a few of us were tagged in it. Municipal municipal officials deserve more respect and admiration than they generally get, proposing a fun remedy. Celebrate the Second Annual Municipal Officials Appreciation Month at an October council select board meeting. Firefighters, though not considered municipal officials by many, perform valuable services for the community and certainly deserve recognition. At the suggestion of MMA past President Elaine Alios, twenty twenty five Municipal Officials Appreciation Month, October, is dedicated especially to firefighters. Thanks for sacrifices you make to serve constituents and for everything else. Your nice Municipal Officials Appreciation Month celebration honoring your firefighters will gain you respect, admiration, in your community and beyond. That that is from the, uh, PS Spirit of America Foundation created the National Municipal Officials Appreciation Month Appreciation Month, uh, last October of twenty twenty four. So we, I believe we missed it last month, but now we have it going forward. With that, I do have a resolve number six. I suppose I can read that.
Would you please?
I'm not sure if I I should, or if you want to designate somebody else. Are you?
We're happy to have you read it.
So resolve number six, twenty twenty five, where a Spirit of America Foundation chairs chairs as municipal officials help with its program and created Municipal Officials Amer- uh, Appreciation Month in twenty twenty five dedicated nationally to firefighters to express gratitude. Whereas the municipal officials make personal sacrifices to serve constituents and deserve more public recognition, respect than they generally receive. Whereas firefighters risk their lives while battling blazes and evacuating folks from built burning buildings. Whereas firefighters faithfully respond twenty-four seven to the variety of emergencies and provide medical care. And whereas firefighters spend many hours each year in training for how to react to situations they could encounter. Whereas Millinocket much appreciates the services provided by its firefighters and other municipal officials. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Millinocket Maine designated October twenty twenty five as Millinocket Municipal Officials Appreciation Appreciation Month and urges our citizens to show gratitude to their municipal officials, including you guys and all of us, especially the the firefighters. For all that they do, this is a better community. And that was authorized by the town manager, Peter Jameson. So not sure that I could motion that, but if somebody wants to motion?
I'll vote. Balls. As previous.
Thank you. Motion by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor McGlaughlin. So this, we're gonna vote on resolve number six. All those in favor, Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counselor Pelletier.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
With aye. Six zero. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I ha- I have two formal, I have, get to have my hands full. Who would like to move forward? Part of our. We all.
Yeah.
How about keeping the syllable? There you go, one on one. Okay.
I'm teaching chair stuff. Go quick there. You're right up there.
Why?
Show it duly. Hello.
Name of Ralph.
Yeah.
Well, good work.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for everything.
I don't know if I should read this.
Oh.
We'll get back to her.
Oh. I I no, I think we can have some public comment. That's chief.
I'd like to take a moment there to thank you guys for recognize, recognize the team, department. We really appreciate this support we give. Yeah. This is go unnoticed in our department. Oh, it's a twenty-four seven job. Right now, you know, Jack Drew, they've been working right around the clock. They had all kinds of emergencies go on this week. Also, the support that we give. Great labor. So again, like, say thank you. Really means a lot. It means a lot to me, it means a lot to the team, the career, and the people.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. And we do appreciate you as well and as your team. Very good. I guess that's the best part of our meeting tonight. Get to move on now. And new business, uh, we don't have a town manager's meeting that will happen next week. That will move us right along to order number two oh seven. Um, Counselor McGlaughlin, can I have you read order number two oh seven, please?
Order number two oh seven dash twenty twenty five, providing for execution of this order that the town. Eight hundred. Eight. Thirty.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor McGlaughlin, seconded by Counselor Dumeay. Do you have heavy hitters to share with us?
Oh, I have.
Thank you.
Three hundred thirty-three thousand four seventy-nine twenty saving. So we see for the saving. One thousand two nine seven towards player and Nelson Eaglefield. Three thousand five oh eight seven six to cry. Ato LLC. That was for reimbursement for some. Five thousand thirty-eight ninety-four number bill. They start. Ten thousand four fifty-nine night on finance. That's credit card. Twenty-seven thousand one thirty-four ninety memory sun located for sand asphalt pickup. Sixty-five thousand two ninety-one to Harrison Trader Enterprises LLC. That was for fire department equipment. Nineteen thousand seven twenty-nine ninety-eight, a municipal association for workers' comp. Four thousand six ninety-six forty-eight to main resource recovery, tire disposal. Three thousand three seventeen ninety to main technology. That's our computer contract. Forty-two thousand three sixty-two thirty-nine, a water company, that's hydrants. Thirty-seven thousand five hundred to Millinocket Memorial Library. That's our library contract. Eighteen thousand four fifty-one fifty-six to municipal waste solutions. That's waste disposal. Five thousand five fifty-six eighty-five to CB and Mahar Engineers. That's for our brownfield assessment. And finally, two hundred twelve thousand two eighteen fifty to the town of East Millinocket. That is our police contract.
Any other council comment on this order? Any public comment on the order? See and none back to the, um, council for a vote on order number two oh seven. Uh, Counselor Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Pelletier?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Higgins?
Aye.
I'm. May. I'm Dumeay. I'm sorry. I'm already, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye. Motion pass zero. Um, Counselor Pelletier, can I have you read order number two oh eight?
Order two oh eight, that's by providing for its water. Warner for October ninth, twenty-five. It is ordered that the wastewater water for October ninth, five in Yamato, seventy thousand four hundred and twelve percent by.
Second. Uh, motion made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor McGlaughlin. Heavy hitter to mention?
Twelve thousand nine seventy-one. Oh, okay.
Any other council comment on this order? To the public? See and none back to the council for vote on order number two oh eight. Counselor Higgins?
Aye.
Counselor Pelletier?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Dumeay? Aye. Chair Danforth, aye. That passes six zero. Counselor Dumeay, can I have you read order number two oh nine?
Good, Madam Chair. Providing for commitment of FY twenty twenty-six property taxes, order number two oh nine, twenty twenty-five. It is ordered that fiscal year twenty twenty-six property taxes be committed and due date for the first half payment is thirty days after the commitment date or on the following next business day. And for the second half to be due on the corresponding date in March twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Okay.
Motion made by Counsel Dumeay, seconded by Counsel McGlaughlin. Counsel comment on the order? Both make mention of this order and, um, Mr. Manager, you can fill me in if I leave anything out other than it looks like sometime this weekend our assessor will, uh, terming, um, the date for us by setting, um, the tax rate. And so that's why, uh, we don't have um, an October date set in there yet, but second payment will be.
Yes. Yes, uh. Final meeting. Agreement, commitment that spoken about a few times, how we had that just after. And but in process, uh.
Last on that.
Good about it. We just, you know, uh, wasn't enough time between the end of that meeting and the beginning of this one to to come up with this final number. So uh, yes, Lorna will be here, uh, and to to Aaron. Oh.
Any other council comment on the order? Madam Clerk, was there a?
No, I just wanted to make sure that that, I I didn't re-hear that order completely, so I just wanted to make sure it was something else.
Okay.
Making sure that he had the updated order as all.
Um, any public comment on the order? Move back to the council for a vote on order, um, number two, the updated order number two oh nine. Um, how do you vote, Counselor Higgins?
Aye.
Counselor Pelletier?
Aye.
Um, Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Dumeay? McGlaughlin?
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye. It passes zero. Counselor Mackin, can I have you read order number two ten, please?
Order number two ten, twenty twenty-five, writing for setting the mill rate for FY twenty-six. It is ordered that Millinock Council, town council approves the FY twenty-six mill rate set by Leah Satch.
Second. She made by Counselor Mackin, seconded by Counselor McGlaughlin. Counsel comment on the order? I will just make a comment that we don't have the mill rate to set in there at this meeting, um. So that's why it's set sort of vague that it will be set by the assessor and that's her legal duty. Would you like to come? Please, yes. Thank you.
Afternoon. Taxpayers. Try the number for them. They are such a large taxpayer. They see. We've been a little bit about this in the past, but in general, in order to carve ratio at a hundred percent of fair market value. Adjustment this year.
Anna, can you move in front of the microphone? Pull it down. Thank you.
Uh, approximately. Just money cost schedule that will vary by account depending on cave, the home, how much. And think, and, uh, we are about double land values. That adjustment has not tell you when, um, so that aspect. Um. Nope.
Counselor have questions or or other comments? Any public comment on this order? Your honor, see and none will go back to the council for vote on order number two ten?
Wait.
Back up. Uh, we have.
Sullivan has her hand.
Okay.
My hand, hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. My hand is up because I don't know about, uh, Counselor Higgins. Uh, but I could not hear hear a single thing that was just said. Um, all it appears to me is that you guys are voting on something that you have no idea what you're voting on. Is that what I'm supposed to get from this?
No, there's much more, um, Sullivan. So, um, Lorna, our assessor is coming back to the mic until speaking.
Sandy, I'm happy to answer any question that you may have. The council by charter does not have the obligation of setting the mill rate. The assessor does. So, uh, that is an appropriate order on their part. They are just going, uh.
Except.
Except is the word I wanted. I kept coming up with amend and I knew that was the wrong, very good answer. Uh, and I'm certainly happy, Sandy, to answer any questions that you may have.
I I listened purposely tonight because I wanted to know what the mill rate was going to be. And it seems to me, and I'm, um, a meeting not too far distant past. It was stated that also the assessment was going to be going up a certain percentage uh, on, um, uh, I believe the building assessment, and I can't remember what that was. Can you enlighten me on that?
I certainly can. So I apologize that you didn't hear me last time. My voice is usually quite loud. Uh, it is going to be a sixteen percent building adjustment that will impact different accounts, different ways, depending on depreciation and the age of the home, et cetera. Uh, then we are also doing a land adjustment because that has not been done in many years, and we are doing that to maintain state standards and stay at a hundred percent of fair market value.
And so how much is the land value going to be adjusted?
So again, uh, we are just about doubling land values. It's going to vary depending on what neighborhood you are located in because they all have different cost schedules.
One thing to remember, Sandy, is that, uh, you know, the the way that math works out that we speak about several times a year. You know, when when valuations go up, it we are able to usually lower the mill rate uh, to balance it out. So the valuation and the mill rate are just part of the equation. They don't necessarily uh, impact higher or lower on your tax bill. Like we, we, we try to.
They don't impact higher. I'm laughing at that, Peter.
That's very rude.
I can reiterate what Peter says. It's a mathematical equation. There is amount of money that is approved, the budgeting process. That amount needs to be paid for, and that is paid for based on the total valuation of the town, which is divided in and creates the mill rate, which gives the percentage per thousand dollars of valuation that each taxpayer is responsible to pay their fair share.
And so we will know the mill rate when the tax bill actually comes out. We're not gonna know it before that.
Uh, it probably will be available next week as long as the computer software forms appropriately. Where I'll be doing this work in off hours, the software company would not be available if we have some sort of glitch that occurred.
Thank you.
But as we do send out regular communication, this would fit in with our common practice to send out via social media, email. Um, you know, all of that, which, you know, i- is is a natural way that we share these kinds of things. And then, um, of course, during my manager's report at the second meeting of the month, we will rehash all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Lorna. Can you? If you, there's, it's public comment time, so if you come up to the mic and you state your name and your address, if you have a question. If you're a Millin-, are you a Millinocket resident? You have a question related to this particular order? Can you please state your name and address? Good. You?
The first meeting, the bad. We first conversation that I could stand this late.
Thank you. So it's hard for the audience here presently to hear counselors speak? Is that what I? We'll work on that. Thank you. So back to order number two ten. Is there, back to the council. Counselor Dumeay?
Briefly, I would just like to all kind of follow up on what Miss Sullivan was talking about and also kind of what Lorna and Peter were talking about. To me, the biggest impact on somebody's taxes on which they pay is during the budgetary process on what we what we spend versus what our revenues are. That's why it's really super important that people pay attention and attend the meetings and give, give their counselors of choice advice to which they the services then that are really important to them and how much we're willing to spend for those services, school department included. So those conversations at budgetary time are really important to us. Myself, I feel, that really have the most impact on somebody's taxes that they pay on their property. Thank you.
Other counsel? We will now take it to a vote on order number two ten. Uh, Counselor Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Pelletier?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counselor Dumeay?
Aye.
McGlaughlin? Aye. Uh, Chair Danforth, aye. That passes six zero. Counselor Pelletier, can I have you read order number of, uh, two hundred and eleven, please?
Order, uh, that by by setting Peter's rate finance here. It is ordered that the teaching for FY twenty-six, the liquid tax set at seven point five percent. An interest rate will begin on first half taxes on the thirty-first day after the commitment date. And on the thirty-first day after second half set due date, and it is further ordered that the interest rate finance here to be set up, set at same rate as fiscal year.
I'll second that. Motion made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Chair Danforth. Counsel comment on this order?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the order.
Go ahead.
I would like to propose instead of a seven point five percent increase, I would like to propose a five percent increase. I think it's important that one of the functions that we can do as a council is adjust tax rate. It doesn't need to be the state maximum every time, all the time. I think one thing that we can do is try to alleviate some of the pressure on in burdens that the taxpayer have if they are delinquent. Not that we're encouraging delinquency. We, of course, we want people to pay on time. But, um, if they're having hardship, then it is within our But if they're having hardship, then it is within our purview to adjust that. That, that tax. So. Starting that interest rate on the delinquent tax. So that would be my proposal, five percent. Thank you.
Do we have a second? So you just, you just made a motion to amend five percent. Do we have a second on that proposed amendment?
Let's take a discussion, amend, I mean, I'll second.
Okay. Motion to amend by Counselor Dumeay, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. A more counsel comment on this potential amendment? Counsel Pelletier?
On the flip side. The interest rate paid on prepayment taxes is four percent. The delinquent less than the delinquent rate. So at five percent, that my prepayment would only earn one percentage. Other than three percent.
I don't think it really works like that. But.
I just, if I may.
Please, Madam Chair. Yeah.
Clarification on the prepayments. That isn't if you came in as a citizen and made a prepayment purposely on your account. That would be only if there was an adjustment to a billing in error on the assessor's part or what have you. Then we would have to reimburse any prepayments that had been made to that account.
So I should rethink paying ahead.
And no, thank you for paying ahead. We appreciate it. Does that clear that up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, please. Come right to the mic before you speak so everybody can hear. Thank you, Lauren.
Sorry. I don't have the. Kind of in front of me. Is that for prepayment or over?
Overpayment.
Consider overpayment.
Overpayment.
So overpayment, recently wanting to do that. Because we are in a deal with a taxpayer and they see their tax bill and owe them money back. Pay them interest on the money that they have over.
From the next order.
Yes. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Counsel Pelletier had mentioned. So there's any other discussion on the amendment to change it to five percent from seven point five percent? Counselor Dumeay?
Just add a little context to it. Here we have provided to us backup documentation of the last twenty years of the state. State titled income tax rate on which we're allowed to do. And it seems to me, I asked the clerk to provide me with. Millinocket historically has been doing in last fifteen years, other than three times, we've always met the state. Maximum allowance. So I just think in an effort to mitigate that a little bit. Shoot low at five percent.
Any other counsel comment on the amendment? Any public comment on the amendment? Proposed amendment? So we'll come back to the council. Yes, please come back to the, come to the mic before you speak, please.
Never gonna learn that. I think that that rate is calculated based on what it costs to sit on that money when they're not. And I think that's how the state up with those numbers based on the cost. Are we being such at the time? Helps any with the context.
Thank you for the additional information. And as you had mentioned that we were invited backup for what the state maximum is. And also. The Madam Clerk had given us like ten years of what has been done historically. And most of it, other than a couple of years, has been at the maximum rate. So that's what the town has done in the past.
Thank you for repeating what I said.
I know. I'm just, I, I am, for context, I'm sorry, just it's the way I could process. And I know other people are, you know, figuring out as well. So. So we will vote on the proposed amendment to change the delinquent tax rate to five percent instead of seven point five percent. Counsel Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Higgins?
I didn't hear Counsel Pelletier. What did he say?
He said nay. He said no.
I'm going to say nay.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay? Counsel McGowan?
Nay.
Yeah. Chair Danforth, I'm going to say yes. And so it's a tie. And. And then it fails.
But you look good.
That was a tough one. So we have to go back to the order as read. Any other, I will ask if there's any further comment on that? Any public comment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to propose that we change the interest rate from seven point five to six percent.
Second.
Alright, so we have a new amendment, six percent. And we, we have a motion made by Counselor Dumeay, seconded by Counselor Higgins. Counsel comment on six percent? Public comment on six percent? Counselor Pelletier?
Maybe Lorna, the. Found on, found this way. In case of a.
It would be the same way at one percent, one and a half percent lower interest rate. I don't think we need to go into that.
Any other counsel comment on the order, on the proposed order? Need public? And we're going to bring it back to the council to vote on the amendment. That will read, change the interest rate to six percent. How do you vote on the proposed amendment? Counsel Pelletier?
Aye.
Counselor Higgins?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay?
Aye.
Counsel McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, passes six zero. Okay, that takes us to order.
That was only.
Oh, oh, my goodness. Okay, thank you. Now we will vote on the order as amended. Do we need to go to public comment again? Yeah. Let's start with counsel comment. Any counsel comment, any public comment on the order as amended?
I will just note for the following order that the interest rate is, on the overpayment would be half. So that would go to three.
We get there. Okay, thank you. So we will vote on order number two eleven as amended. How do you vote, Counselor Higgins?
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay? Counsel McGowan? Aye. Chair Danforth, aye. It passes. Six zero. Thank you. Put me through my paces tonight. So. Order number two twelve, do you have that to read, Counselor Higgins?
Yes, Madam Chair. Order number, and this is where Madam Clerk had said it's going to go three percent?
Correct. If you read it that way, we won't have to make an amendment or. To the standing order, yeah.
Order two twelve, twenty twenty five, providing for interest rate for the overpayment of taxes. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council set the F Y twenty six interest rate for the overpayment of taxes at three percent. Note, subject in five oh six. Dash A, overpayment of taxes allows a municipality to reduce the interest rate for overpayment of taxes by four percentage points of what it charges for the interest rate of delinquent taxes.
The motion made by Counsel Higgins, seconded by Counsel Dumeay, and we have a correction needed, Madam Clerk?
Reading the no, overpayment of taxes by four percent points. So that would bring that down to two. My apologies. Yes, thank you. So an amendment is needed.
Yeah.
If you were wondering.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make amendment to the order.
Yes.
I'd like to have it read taxes at three percent and skipping down to the note, taxes by two percentage points.
Second.
The motion to amend by Counsel Dumeay, seconded by Counselor Higgins. So in total.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Madam Clerk?
The note specifically, it's four percentage points below the interest rate. So the percent, the four percent is correct. The percentage for the overpayment of taxes should read two percent, period. He was trying.
You can't.
It's here. Over that. That place lower would be.
So.
In the note, it mentions the four percentage points lower. So if it was set at six.
So what to, so, okay, walk me through this again. What do we need to do to correct? We're at the amendment.
We need to say taxes at two percent instead of taxes at three point five.
Correct.
Oh. And then the four stays the same down here.
So procedural wise, do we need to back out of the amendments? We need to vote them down? Or can you correct?
You can rescind the amendment and then create a new one because it was already seconded.
Okay.
So Counsel. Counsel Higgins?
Seconded.
Yeah.
No.
So you rescind your amendment and then re-read it?
Sure.
Yeah. And so Bob, can you rescind? Counsel Higgins, rescind your second?
I can rescind my second.
Let's start, let's start cleaning on the.
Motion, Madam Chair?
Please.
That it read overpayment of taxes at two percent. And skipping down to the note, it does not change. It stays at four percentage points.
Motion to amend by Counsel Dumeay?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Higgins. So let's vote on. The amendment. All those in favor of amending order two twelve so that the change is that the tax, the overpayment of taxes is two percent. How do you vote, Counselor Higgins?
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay? Counsel McGowan?
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye. So that passes six zero, the amendment. Now let's vote on the order two twelve as amended. Counsel Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin? Counsel Dumeay? Counsel McGowan?
Aye.
And Chair Danforth, aye. That passes as amended, six zero. Thank you. Okay. Counselor McGowan, can I have you read order number two thirteen, please?
Yes. Order number two thirteen dash twenty twenty five, providing for date, time, place, warden, the November fourth, twenty twenty five. Millinocket municipal election and referendum. It is ordered that the Millinocket Municipal Election and Referendum will be held on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty five, from eight AM to eight PM at the Sterns High School Gymnasium. And it is further ordered that Michael Kite shall be warden of said election.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel McGowan, seconded by Counselor Higgins. Counsel comment on this order? Any public comment on the order? Being none, back to the council for a vote on order number two thirteen. How do you vote, Counsel Higgins?
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel McGowan?
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay? Chair Danforth, aye. Passes six zero. Counselor Dumeay, can I have you read order number two fourteen, please?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Order number two fourteen dash twenty twenty five, providing for. Processing absentee ballots for November fourth, twenty twenty five, Millinocket Municipal Election Referendum. Whereas title twenty one dash A M R S A, section seven five nine point seven, allows the election warden and appointed deputies to process absentee ballots while the polls are open. And whereas processing such ballots will assist the election clerks and result in an expedited process after the polls are closed. And whereas expediting the process after the polls are closed will result in some savings to the town of Millinocket. Now therefore, it is ordered that the election warden is authorized to process absentee ballots at nine AM, eleven AM, two PM, and six PM during the Millinocket Municipal Election and Referendum on November fourth, twenty twenty five.
Second. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Dumeay, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Counsel comment on the order? Public comment? Yes, look, Madam Clerk, you're going to be busy that day.
Thank you, yes. Just a reminder that absentee ballots for in voting per, in person voting, became available Monday, October fifth and six, I'm sorry. And. They will be available through Thursday to the end, prior to the election date. Just a reminder that absentee ballots are now available.
Thank you. Any other comment on the order? Being none, back to the council for a vote on order number two fourteen. Counselor McGowan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier?
Aye.
And Counselor Higgins?
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, that passes six zero. Counselor Mackin, can I have you read order number two fifteen, please?
Order number two fifteen dash twenty twenty five, binding for office hours of the registrar for November fourth, twenty twenty five, Millinocket Municipal Election and Referendum. Whereas title twenty one dash A M R S A, section one twenty two, specifies the process that the registrar must follow in registering voters. And whereas the town clerk also reserve, also serves as registrar. And whereas the town clerk has regular hours on four business days before election day to register voters. And whereas the open evening hour, as required by law to receive voter registration, will be an added cost to the municipality. Now therefore, it is ordered that it's not necessary for the registrar to be open to accept voter registrations for two hours in the evening between nine PM and five PM and nine PM on at least two days before election day.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mackin, seconded by Counsel McGowan. Any counsel comment on the order? Any public comment on the order? Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Just a reminder that the registrar is available all day long at the election as well. So if there are any changes that can happen then.
Thank you. Back to the council for a vote on order number two fifteen. Counsel McGowan?
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier? Counsel Higgins?
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, that passes six zero. Counsel Higgins, can I have you read order number two sixteen, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Order number two sixteen, twenty twenty five, providing for award of number two oil fuel, oil bid for twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six heating season. Whereas the annual bid opening for number two fuel oil was held on September twenty fifth, where one bid was received. It is ordered, the Millinocket Town Council awards the twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six fuel oil bid to Preble Oil Company at two dollars forty six, seven, two cents. Total price per gallon delivered.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Higgins, seconded by Counsel McGowan. Any counsel comment on the order? Counsel Dumeay?
I think this is the first time, Madam Chair, that I've ever seen one bidder and not two enough, three.
Generally, we send those to. You know, anybody within reach. So we send the bid package to Preble, Ragden, C N Brown. Maybe Dead River as well. In recent years, we've had. Pretty regularly two bids. Preble and C N Brown. This year, we just got the one bid.
Yeah, I see that. I just noticed that, yeah.
They have come in as the lowest bidder.
I get it.
We certainly appreciate their service.
Sure.
Yeah. Any other counsel comment on the order? Any public comment? Being none, back to the council for a vote on order two sixteen. Counselor Higgins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier? Counselor Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay?
Aye.
Counsel McGowan?
Aye.
And Chair Danforth, aye, that passes six zero. Counsel McGowan, can I have you read order number two seventeen?
Yes. Order number two seventeen dash twenty twenty five, providing for adoption of Millinocket Fire Service Billing. Yes, order number two seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, providing for adoption of Millenocket Fire Service Billing Policy. Whereas the administrative team with consideration of common industry practice. Has developed the attached policy. To identify solutions to a currently limited or non-existent. Local practice for billing of services such as vehicle accidents, vehicle fires, fluid spills. Asthma incidents and faults or nuisance alarms. And whereas the administrative responsibilities outlined in this policy are expected to be handled in-house. By the Millenocket Fire Chief. And therefore would not increase expenses related to other fire department billing contracts. It is ordered that the Millenocket Town Council adopts the attached Millenocket Fire Service Billing Policy.
Second.
We'll get back to Councillor Higgins, motion made, Councillor McGowan, seconded by Councillor Higgins. Um, council comment on the order? Any public comment on the order? I just, we'll bring it back for a vote, but I'll thank the chief for, um, doing his research. On this, um, policy, I read through it. Looks pretty sound, and it was something that was missing in the past. Good. Thank you, so we will take a vote on order two seventeen, Councillor Higgins.
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier.
Aye.
Uh, Councillor Mackin.
Aye.
Councillor Dume.
Aye.
Councillor McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, passes six zero. Um, let's see what we have. Councillor Pelletier, can I have you read order two eighteen?
Order twenty-eight, twenty-five, providing for station transfer funds for wastewater main pump station. Whereas now time to complete the billing process on. For this project, and whereas. Was originally planned, the final funding to complete this project estimated at. Nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars is currently held. In a reserve account. It is ordered that the Millenocket Town Council authorize the town. Treasurer to transfer these funds into the town wastewater budget. For the purpose of processing final payment. On the multi-year wastewater main pump. Station upgrade project.
Second. Motion made by Councillor Pelletier, seconded by Councillor McGowan, council comment on the order? Any public comment on the order? Be a nun back to the council for vote on order two eighteen, Councillor McGowan.
Aye.
Councillor Dume.
Aye.
Councillor Mackin.
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier.
Aye.
Um, Councillor Higgins.
Aye.
Uh, Chair Danforth, aye, passes six zero. Um, Councillor Pellet. Where are we, we just read, Councillor Dume, can I have you read order number two nineteen?
Yes, Madam Chair, order two nineteen dash twenty twenty-five, providing for transfer of unassigned funds to supplemental supplement paving budget. Whereas the final plans for annual paving. And the related invoice became larger than anticipated during FY twenty-six budget preparation. And whereas these tentative adjustments. Were communicated with the town council through the process. It is ordered that the Millenocket Town Council authorizes the transfer of fifty thousand dollars. From the unassigned fund balance. To budget line zero four zero seven dash two zero one one. Road paving and construction. Note, current unaudited unassigned fund balance is. Three million, six hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars. If approved. The unassigned fund balance would be three million, six hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dume, seconded by Councillor McGowan. Council comment on the order? Any public comment on the order? Be a nun back to the council for vote on order number two nineteen, how do you vote, Councillor Higgins?
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier.
Aye.
Councillor Mackin.
Aye.
Councillor Dume.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, that passes six zero. Um, Councillor Mackin, can I have you read order number two twenty, please?
Order number twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Yes, twenty twenty-five. Providing for approval or appointment to Recreation Advisory Committee and Sherret. It is ordered that Mia Sherret is hereby appointed to the town of Millenocket Recreation Advisory Committee. For a three-year term to expire October thirty-first. Twenty twenty-eight. Note Mia's application was received on ten June twenty twenty-five and is the only application on file. If approved, this appointment needs to board with one alternate seat vacancy.
Second. Motion made by Councillor McGowan, seconded by Councillor McGowan, any council comment on the order? Councillor Dume?
Just really want to thank, um. Ms. Sherret for volunteering her time to our community, uh. These are much appreciated, often under. Underappreciated and very well-deserved recognition, uh, for their time and commitment, so, thank you Mia.
Any other council comments? Any public comment? Be a nun back to the council for, um, vote on order number two twenty, Councillor McGowan.
Aye.
Councillor Dume.
Aye.
Councillor Mackin.
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier.
Aye.
Councillor Higgins.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, so that passes six zero. Uh, Councillor Higgins, are you, do you have two, order number two twenty-one?
Yes, Madam Chair, order number two twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, providing for approval of an application for a vicular license. For canton and in and suites. It is ordered that the attached application for a vicular license is hereby approved for session. Tapa? Taipa?
Close enough, I guess. Stop, okay.
SS and DSLLC. Gitanian Suites Business Address seven forty, Central Street, Millenocket, doing business as the Summit Sports and Spirits. Seven forty, Central Street, Millenocket.
Motion made by Councillor Higgins, seconded by Councillor Dume. Council comment? I'll just, is, is this a brand-new enterprise, I'll ask Madam Clerk, is. Have we done this before, is this a new, are they opening a new?
This is new. They, they, they've been working on. Producing this restaurant for a while, and. Uh, they are now at the point where they're ready to.
Very good, yeah.
New businesses.
That's right, and reading through it, I thought it was new, so, thank you.
And if I made a follow-up, it will, um. Affect the next order as well, so I may as well tell you now. The viculars is for the serving of the beverages, as well as, I believe they're gonna have continental breakfasts and, and also food in their establishment. Um. I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
I haven't been directly involved, uh.
Thank you. Our menu, however, um. Their. Liquor license. That the council approved last year. Um, there was a lot of pending, uh, issues that were, um, held up and fixed. Um, for the, the state to then. Pend your approval of that liquor license. Um, and I learned that. Since that was, uh, approved just. Recently, October. And through the state, September, I'm sorry, September twenty-second. Um, it was approved through the council in twenty-four, but it held your approval, so. Knowing that they can do that now, because I was seeking another liquor license for them to renew, but that's not necessary because their liquor license was. Just approved this year. So that is why you won't see a liquor license, um, application to approve with the entertainment. The entertainment. Had expired and needs to be renewed from last year, so.
Thank you for that.
Explanation, my apologies.
No, I appreciate it, I. Appreciate your diligence on that. All right. Any, um. Any public comment on this order? Back to the council for vote on order number two twenty-one, uh, Councillor Higgins, how do you vote? Councillor Pelletier.
Aye.
Councillor Mackin.
Aye.
Councillor Dume.
Aye.
Councillor McGowan.
Aye.
And Chair Danforth, aye, that passes six zero. Councillor McGowan, can I have you read order number two twenty-two? Number two?
Order number two twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five, providing for approval of an application for an entertainment license for canton and in and suites. It is ordered that the attached application for an entertainment license is hereby approved for Sachin.
Tap.
Tap.
SS and DSLLC, had in suites, business address seven forty, Central Street, Millenocket, doing business as the Summit. Sports and Spirits, seven forty, Central Street, Millenocket.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor McGowan, seconded by Councillor Higgins. Um, any council comment on this order? Good explanation, any, um, public comment on the order? See a nun, we'll go back to the council for vote on order two twenty-two, Councillor McGowan.
Aye.
Councillor Dume.
Aye.
Councillor Mackin.
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier.
Aye.
Councillor Higgins.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, that passes six zero, thank you. So that takes us into reports and communications, uh, warrant committee for October twenty-third will be myself and Councillor Bragden, check with him on that. Um, chair committee reports, um, I don't have, uh, age-friendly committee report, other than we are. We are having a meeting on Tuesday, October fourteenth, but it's not a regular one, and it has not been posted, it'll just be sort of a brainstorming session for. A work group or some of the committee members. Um, so that's why you haven't received an agenda, Madam Clerk, to post anywhere, but, um. Two minutes, so that takes us into two-minute public comment, if there's anybody from the public that wants to, um, address the. Council.
Will. Oh. Yep.
Oh, you need to come up to the, um. Oh, you need to come up to, if you, up to the microphone and state your name and address? You need to step, step it, I'm sorry, just so that everybody can hear, we need to use the microphone system. Will, thank you.
Um, I'm actually here.
You, can you give us your address?
Yeah, I'm sorry, ninety-nine Park Street, Millenocket.
East Millenocket, okay.
I am the chairman of the planning board. Uh. Historically, based on my research. Made very little activity. Uh, recently. We drive really hard, that's, that's my. By the way. Um. Can I give a little bit of my history?
So this is, this is two-minute public comment, if there's something, you know, high level that you want to share with us, and I would be willing to meet with you later, or?
It's, I'm looking to. Consider, possibly consider partnering with the region for economic development. Uh. But before I can say anything further, uh. How can you trust somebody if you don't know?
Right, yeah.
Which is why I'm asking, but. What I'm asking for also is perhaps maybe you can designate someone, a member of the council or a committee. To start discussions. Pursue, in pursuit of mutual interest. This is based on, um. Numerous documents that I've read. I have a very strong, uh, background in research, by the way.
Okay.
Why one of them. Uh, I've researched numerous documents, I always like to search. So I've researched numerous documents and writings about economic development. Uh, my opinion, based on what I've seen, I've been here four years now. Uh, there's tremendous potential. The region, uh. But it's gotta be worth. It's, it's a regional issue, right now, it appears that most of us are working independently. Uh, I don't think that Millenocket has had much of a. Issue. But this is why. I've been in leadership positions in federal government and military, I did twenty years military active. Uh, I worked in the intelligence community, what I did for a living, which involves.
Sir, can I just, I, I want to interrupt you for a second, and knowing that this is two-minute public comment, but I am happy to follow up with you, and perhaps I will. Call Councillor Pelletier, and I, we have, we do sit on, uh, an informal economic development committee. And so I think the two of us, um, could find time to meet with you and, and hear what you have to say, some of your ideas, and see where they might take us.
I've actually already got their plans and everything. That could, that are focused on East Millenocket, they can.
Regionalize.
Expanded region-wise, this is.
If you have something to share with us, that would, that would all be fine, but I will, uh, encourage you that afterwards, I can give you a contact information, and we can follow up, um.
Madam Chair, also, if, if he's interested, if you or the manager are so inclined, he could be. This sounds more like a presentation.
Yeah.
And maybe after you meet with them. Uh, you and Councillor Pelletier, then. If you see it.
Yeah.
Seem unnecessary to hold a presentation.
Thank you. And I see you passed out, um, some information about the Gazetteer here, I'm very familiar with that as well, so I think this would serve us well to meet, um, again, outside of the meeting, and then figure out if.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking for, basically, if you can appoint someone.
Yeah, and I just did, I pointed myself, and I, I pointed, uh, Councillor Pelletier, you got us.
Okay.
I'll follow up with, follow up with you after.
Okay, thank you, thank, thank you for your time.
You're, yep, the stay after, so you're most welcome. Any other public comment? Be a nun, I will, oh, oh, we do. Dustin Teller.
Public health safety officer. I just want to thank Brian and. Haven't. Oh, God, haven't. That's saving minds.
Yeah.
And especially Ross Mark. I, in front of the fire hydrant. Having issues with. Hands out very, very well. Public, thank.
Think we all echo those sentiments, yes, thank you.
No, I, one of my favorite parts, you know. I mean, the public works crew is awesome, they do. Incredible work and, and more than. Six or seven people ever should have to do, um. But with the new paving. The ADA access to the sidewalks. Is actually ADA accessible. It, it was at a point where. The tar was, you know.
Three and a half to two inches over.
It, it was, it was probably more. Than that, but lower where the curbs are, and now they're flush.
So on that, the sidewalk side should be raised.